... meeting for January 2022 to order, please. Please all rise for the pleasurable allegiance and the invocation. Good and gracious God, watch over us this evening and help us to make the correct decisions that we need to make going forward. Dear Lord, protect our troops all over the world, wherever they may be, in support of the United States of America. Amen.
Yes, Mr. Chair? Commissioner Baird?
Present.
Commissioner Walz?
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Commissioner Duckham?
Present.
Commissioner Poleski?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Snell?
Here.
Chairman Shotwell?
Here.
Seven present.
Aye. Aye. Any other communications? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other communications? 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 Certainly with all the challenges we face as a state, and again, I'm pleased to be here in person this evening, and thank you all for continuing your work through the COVID pandemic, and also just as a county board of commissioners to continue to keep us here in person. We are having challenges, you can imagine, finding people to do that work for anything that could be an semblance of a profit margin as a for-profit business. That being said, we are not asking for any financial commitment by the board, but simply a resolution that adopts, it's adopted by the board, rather, to urge the state legislature to do something about this, as we believe the 45% reduction was meant more for hospitals and not so much so home health care providers that charged a fair and reasonable rate for the services provided to those claimants needing home health care to remain in their homes. We have been at this quite some time now, almost a year. I myself am not a politician. I'm not someone who's used to talking with state reps and legislatures, although I have been accustomed to it now over the last almost 11 months. We have been working with Majority Leader Shirkey, along with Jason Wentworth in the House, to adopt somewhat of a bill that could get some traction here. We know there has been some legislation introduced. Thank you. While at the same time, we do believe a voice from the community and county level can be, have some weight, certainly in bringing an awareness to what's going on with our local individuals who are, again, relying on these families, relying on the care that we provide. Thank you, sir. You bet. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
My name is Catherine Kierzmann. I reside at 1116 South Duran, just behind the new Cascade School. To the south of Cascade School, excuse me, is an acre of land which holds very old oak trees. And this property was included in the sale to the ISD when they purchased Frost School. December 14th, my neighbor pointed out that there are 10 trees that were tagged to be cut down so that a parking lot and a bus pass through could be put in. I contacted Kevin Oxley, Superintendent of the ISD, and asked if the parking lot and the bus pass through could be moved to the south side of the school, and was told that that property belongs to the county. I spoke with Steve Shotwell and asked if the property on the south side of Frost School could be sold to the ISD and then have the parking lot and the bus pass moved over there. Mr. Shotwell suggested there might be a possibility of a land swap take place. And could I please write a letter to him and to Mr. Overton, which I did. On January 4th, the Jackson County Audubon Society Big Tree Coordinators Monica Day and Peg Clevinger surveyed the trees. The trees are white oak and bar oak, and using a widely calculation to determine the tree age, they found that the smallest trees are 191 years old. Those date back before Michigan became a state. The other large trees are 300 years old, which means that they were here around 1731, before we were a nation. These trees can live to be up to 500 years old. They are healthy and they're not diseased. These trees are drought tolerant and fire resistant, and when we had that category zero tornado a few years ago, those trees withstood that great wind. They were not damaged. Our neighborhood has a high water table. Jackson County, as you know, is the headwater of five rivers. These mature oak trees provide an ecosystem by absorbing water through their roots. One large tree can soak up to 100 gallons of water a day. That is the reason that a holding pond was dug when the foundation-
Thirty seconds.
-new Cascade School was put in. I'm asking that you work with the ISD and please do something to save those trees and the history of those trees for this community and this county. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Susan Chester, and I'm here really for personal reasons, and I want to thank everyone who just went before me and to all of you for all of your work as Jackson County officials. So, this is regarding a parcel of land that's been offered for sale that adjoins our property that we own, and it's been our personal property now for 10 years. And our concern is that, it kind of became a concern to me personally, although my husband, I grew up here in Jackson County, my husband's from McComb County, he retired here 10 years ago, and we realized as we began to purchase the lots that became available to us adjoining our home, that these woods were a mess, and they were kind of odd pieces of land, but because they were adjoining our home, we felt that they were available and we wanted to acquire them. At the same time, we were concerned about fire in the area, in the woods, and I started to realize, wow, this really is an issue, and I understand the value of maintaining, especially trees that are drought resistant and that have value to keeping our land and our soils healthy and safe. So I'm totally in support of that. At the same time, we need healthier ways to process the dead wood that is, you know, in our lots and in our lands. And this parcel that's up for sale, our main concern is that if it does go to someone who has no interest in maintaining the health of the land, which we've been caring for it for 10 years now, it's approximately a 40-foot lot that's about 150 feet deep, although the land is not level, and also, all of this land, when we moved in, we realized, had been taken out or removed, so we're below ground level. Both roads, both Oakwood and Heights Drive, were facing kind of washout conditions, and my husband and I have been working to fill in those areas and save those roads and also plant-
Thirty seconds.
-new trees. And so, we just hope that we can acquire that parcel, not that we want special consideration, but that it's really important to consider caring for the land and working with the county's natural resources, and we do hope that you consider the care for the natural resources and the trees that do help the area and then help process the dead stuff in a way that builds up the soil, like get it in the ground. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I just want to say that with regard to trees, in every acre, there needs to be at least four or five dead standing trees. More creatures live in dead trees than they do in live ones. Please remember that when you're cutting everything down and clearing it to make it forest-like. A lot of creatures are moved out, owls, woodpeckers, raccoons, you know, spider, mikan, moss. All these things rely on the dead and decomposing wood of trees. Thank you.
Any other public comment? The first public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees. Approval of the minutes of the December 21st, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. So moved. Approved. I have a motion in support. Any corrections? Deletions? Additions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertained a motion? So moved. We have a motion in support for the consent agenda. Items for removal. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
From the general-
That will be moved to standing committee, general government, becoming 14B elected officials' salaries. Any other items for further consideration? Not quite yet. Mike, where is the property's thing? It's not on here at all. No, it's not. Okay. Okay. First. Any other items? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you post the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
We have now arrived at-
I was unanimous.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Yes.
We have now arrived at standing committees, public safety and transportation, vice chairman-
I'm trying to remember. Corey.
Corey's chair of the committee. Who's the vice chair of that committee?
Right here.
Tony? Tony Bair is. Congratulations, Mr. Bair. You're up to bat. Thank you, sir, for your patience with me.
Okay, the only item of business we have at this meeting, let me scroll through the right part here, is our appointments. And we have one appointment for the Region Two Planning Commission. The current member is Colby Winters. The committee recommendation is Tom McKinder. That is our only nomination for this public seat.
I'll support that.
We have a motion to support. Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Vice Chairman of Public Safety and Transportation, Commissioner Baird.
We have no further business.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee General Government chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham. Belle, could you speak a little closer to the mic? Thank you, sir. We'll continue to post.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. They've changed all the signs here. I just noticed. Read them. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Thank you, Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Earl Poleski. Commissioner Poleski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item tonight. It is appointments to the Department on Aging Advisory Council. There are two terms expiring. The current incumbents are Dennis Peck and Felicia Richmond. We had no applicants at committee, but we did arrive at Tom McKinder as the committee recommendation for one of the public seats. We offer that as our recommendation for one of the open seats, Mr. Chair.
Move to approve. We have a motion in support. Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Poleski.
We have no further action tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. We've arrived at unfinished business. As an explanation to the audience, due to some administrative and clinical errors, we have postponed the property's decision, only because we have to make sure the paperwork is filled out correctly with all agencies involved. Just so you're aware, so it's going to go on for one more meeting cycle. I do thank everyone's patience on this matter. New business? We have none. Anything to be brought up, commissioners? Commissioner Duckham.
Yes, I would like to see if, I don't know if you should make a motion, but I'd like to review the request to be a paying member of the Raisin River Watershed Board.
I would ask for a motion to redirect that to the Administrator Controller's office and for him to produce an analysis and make it available to us for further decision.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that we have the administrator review the request to be a paying member of the Raisin River Watershed.
We have a motion in support. Any further questions? All in favor for the directed? Aye. Those opposed? Duly carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Congratulations, Mike. Any other new business to be brought before the board? Hearing none at this time. We've arrived at public comment. This is the two-minute version?
Oh, really? Well, you guys want a longer meeting, don't you? I don't even have the time to write everything down. Don't start yet.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Thank you. My name is Jennifer Viniger. I'm not prepared with the numbers and the data tonight, but I feel the urgency is necessary to speak now. More and more information is being revealed about the dangers of the COVID shot. I realize the importance of our health department and being, you know, a very valuable tool, but I would hope that they would act in wisdom based on all the information that continues to come out, not just that from the rich and powerful who control and run the pharmaceutical industry and most major media firms. After two years of misleading information, they are being forced to acknowledge the ineffectiveness of masks and the shots. There is a difference between offering the shot and promoting it. Then, there's a difference between having it and promoting it. And unfortunately, I was just at the Jackson School meeting, they're bringing clinics for it, they're promoting it to our children. The children, there has been no evidence of, major evidence of children dying or getting complications from the actual virus itself, but there's tons of evidence coming in that children are dying and having extreme health consequences. We need to get that information to the people. Nobody comes into the vax and they read through the five-page flyer that I went and got. And in that flyer, even then, it does not mention death. It talks about the reactions and so forth. So many people have died. We need to be able to educate the people so they know what they're getting into and stop believing the lies. So, thank you very much.
My name is Helena from Jackson, and I am in sixth grade. I just wanted to touch base on these vaccines and the push for passports in order to attend my school or other schools. First of all, thank you so much for voting against all these mandates. First of all, thank you so much for voting against all these mandates. Thank you for all your hard work. As far as these vaccines are concerned, I've researched them intensely. I have talked to doctors, nurses, and specialists, all of whom have told me these shots are in no way needed, but even scarier. They are very harmful and cause death, sickness, and cancer. They are pushing these shots on me and my classmates and friends. Please hear me and don't mandate these, ever.
Peter Bournemouth, I wanted to speak about an incident that took place on October 15th, 2021, when a deputy sheriff shot someone. And we haven't received any information about that, although there has been an internal review undertaken by Sheriff Shutey, and there has been a state police investigation that has now submitted the results of their investigation to the prosecutor's office. I just want to say that, you know, that's a serious matter, when an officer shoots someone. We don't know whether that person was black or white, we don't know whether they were young or old, we don't know if they were healthy or mentally ill, we don't know if they were armed, we don't know why. And so, I'd like to say that it's extremely important for trust to build with the sheriff's department, that there is openness. Openness is what builds trust. And what we want, the citizens want, out of the sheriff's department, is always accountability and not cover-ups. And I have a lot of faith in Sheriff Shutey, that as soon as he's able, he's going to provide that information in a press release, but we citizens need to know what happened.
Trees Part Two. If you plant 10 trees, for each one that you destroy, they would never make up the aged trees and the impact they make on the environment and cleaning CO2. One mature tree can capture the same amount of carbon emissions as what driving a car 1,500 miles emits. One tree can absorb up to two pounds of air pollution. There has been no environmental impact done on removing these trees. The issue is, if those trees are removed, that that neighborhood would be flooded after a good rain. Cascade School would be flooded. So again, I just urge you to please consider that patch of land and the environmental effect it's going to have on the neighborhood, the flooding, and the trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan Chester, again. I just feel compelled to say dying trees, Part Two, because I feel it's an area that really needs to be further studied. I think that what I'm learning, and I don't know much of anything, but what I'm learning is that, yes, the living trees absolutely take in the CO2 and give us much-needed oxygen, but this is about healthy trees, but that as the trees die, they actually give off more carbon than they've taken in while they were alive, and now, what's happening now is they're taking in more and more carbons because of more carbons in the air, and so, as they're dying and laying dead, and plus insects and so on, wildlife also give off carbons. The important thing is what we do with those carbons, and so, I'm hoping that we'll learn to store the carbons and sequester the carbons, which will then return health to the soil while we're caring for the living trees that help us in the drought, and we maintain the life of the tree so that we help prevent, you know, fires, and we want to keep the kindling down, because, anyway, thank you again very much.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Brown. I'm from Summit Township. I just wanted to talk about the vaccines. They aren't a vaccine. It's not FDA-approved. The only approved one was the corvidity, and that's not even being administered here in the U.S. or made. It is unethical to give children or anybody these vaccines that don't have FDA approval, and for media to say that it's approved and people believe in it. Fauci's been lying since day one. It's a man-made virus. It has a patent, and it's here to depopulate. If you know anything about the Georgia stones, it's written right there on what they want to do to us. So, I just hope everybody makes it out safe.
Since we're in a theme of Part Two, I just wanted to say one more thing about the Auto Insurance Reform Act. Again, like I mentioned, that we're an organization that is supportive of the choices now that we as drivers have. Unfortunately, these care reimbursement cuts have impacted those that have been injured even 30 years ago. We take care of multitude of clients who've been injured, spinal cord injury, brain injury, who are now in jeopardy of losing the care and support that they depend on, because, again, we as a company are now, and others like us, not just us, but others like us are being forced into this government-mandated 45% fee reduction. And doing the work we saw, there was a lot of people who were gaming the system, attorneys in Detroit and the like, that should be reined in, and so, again, we are supportive of a lot of the changes, although we do believe, again, we've been looped into this big picture of 45% cap reduction, which is going to put care for those who depend on it in jeopardy. And so, I just wanted to state again, it is affecting those who have been previously injured, and those who now are purchasing the unlimited care medical policies for the insurance. It's like now a network almost has been created that we are unable to participate in as providers. So, again, not urging or not requesting any financial assistance from the board or the county, but just more of an acknowledgement and an urging the state to address this issue with an upcoming bill that I did provide in information.
30 seconds, Brian.
Thank you. I did provide information in my handout to the board, and would, again, love to become something on the agenda if that's agreeable. So, thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody else, by the way. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Bear?
Hearing people talk about the COVID, which is really the Communist China flu. The inventor of the mRNA technology, which is in the current Communist China flu shot, says that it should not be given to children. So, the inventor of it says it's not proper for kids. And one person mentioned the predictions that are carved in the Georgia guide stones. If you're not familiar with those, I'd recommend you look it up. There's some scary stuff carved in those Georgia guide stones. It's kind of strange the way they got installed. It's, to me, it's appalling what they say. So, anybody hasn't looked up the Georgia guide stones yet, I'd suggest you do that. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Any other commissioner comments? We are complete. Entertained a motion?
Motion, Chair.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
Richard. All right.